Something go wrong with that accord?
We have a public hearing tonight. Extend the moratorium an additional year for accepting applications for installation of permanent internal eliminated signs within the North of Ross's Farm. And like, open, believing for a public hearing. Anybody wish to address the board? Please do so.
It's the signs and stuff in the village, you have to be with on the outside.
George was up before we get done, you can't stop it.
George, are we ever going to put this into the zoning thing so we don't have to do this every year?
We're in the process right now.
You've been in the process for four years, this is the fourth year.
And I know, that committee never gave us a report, we've never seen it.
Well, let's send the committee a letter and ask them to bring it this time to date.
We've got it, we've got it, we're working on it right now, John. We've got, we've got a copy of the public, the local law.
Yep.
Close the public hearing at this time. Do you want to act on a downed order or you want to wait?
Now make a motion to extend the moratorium for an additional year.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Hockrow, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by you, who sign a "aye".
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Okay, comments from the public at this time? Close this section at this time, you'll have another chance at the end of the meeting. Okay, minutes of the previous meeting. So I have copies, board, to any additions or deletions.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the previous meeting, January 18th.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker. Is there any discussion?
Mayors, is there also a special review number, 31st?
Oh, I did.
Let me amend my motion, January 18th and January 31st. Make a motion to accept the previous meeting.
Very short, sweet.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, the motion is amended, seconded, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by you, who sign a "aye".
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Bills, do we have any additions or deletions?
We do not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second. Moved by trustee Hockrow, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Sure, what's your name? Roberts. Any discussion? There being no discussion, thank you. All those in favor, vote by you, who sign a "aye".
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Discussion on the 2011 New York State Legislature, Legislature Forum.
No forum at this point.
Now you all have a copy of that there, it's Friday, March 4th, at 7:30 to 9:30 a.m. At the West Side Ballroom in Blasberg. I have attended this every year. It'll actually, I think some of you should attend it.
Friday, March 4th.
Yeah, you're going to have, you're going to have Ben Little, Janet Dupree, to say what they're...
I'll go.
Anybody else?
Don't know. Can I make it, maybe?
Sure. I'll make the commitment to go.
One, two, seven.
I think it's good that we get some face time with these ladies.
Yes. Mr. Jefferson?
No. Well, if you don't want to go, the whole board will have to go. Why not? Your board meeting. You know...
We'll sit at different tables.
You will, go.
I think it's good for the village to have some face time with these people.
I can't remember now because I'm waiting for the scheduling.
I don't know what I would say that was.
Uh, March 4th, sorry, March 4th.
7:30 to 9:30.
Okay, everybody, and if I can make it, I'll let you know.
Yeah.
From next day or two?
It's perfect time.
You made a motion, John?
Yeah.
Second. Moved by trustee Hockrow, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by you, who sign a "aye".
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Next thing is 53rd Annual St. Patrick's Day Breakfast on 13 March 17. You can get a corporate table for 240 bucks, that brings 10 people. I know I'm going.
I went last year, we had a good time. I can go that day.
You may ask?
I'll make a motion to allow the mayor and trustee Jefferson to attend the St. Patrick's Day Breakfast on March 17.
Second. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Hockrow, is any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by you, who sign a "aye".
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. There's one other thing that's not on the agenda, the agenda, this afternoon, at 1:00 at the West Side Ballroom, Lieutenant Governor from the State of New York was here, and I got an invitation to go down, and he talked about the budget, upcoming budget for the State of New York. Well, I'll tell you what, there were no roses. I was impressed with the Lieutenant Governor, I think, I think it's a different breed, and he promises he will be no stranger to northern New York.
You're going to cut wasteful deficit spending?
Well, first of all, the schools are going to get hit, and Medicaid, so it's a two tickle. They're looking at everything, anything. And also, looking at layoffs.
I hope it's right in Albany.
Yeah, me too. I don't know, we deserve it.
Anyway, I, you know, I get to know with no specifics, get a, it was an overview, and I was, he put out a nice, he had a nice presentation, and I think it opened some eyes, you know, the hidden, the hidden things that are in the state budget, like the deficit for the State of New York, or not the deficit, the cost of living rates, cost of living, we're up like 2.4%, something like that, and the money given to the school, we're up 12.7%. So I says, what's wrong with that picture? That's going to stop. There's a clause in the budget that allows that, and then, I think there was a piece in the paper Sunday about this. But, the other one was Medicaid, mine, caught, lost it out. And that's going to get caught.
A lot of fraud in there.
So anyway, just to let you know, it was very, very informative, but I was impressed by the Lieutenant Governor, and I had a chance to talk over on a one-on-one basis.
It's good that you went down to the last minute.
Good?
Yeah. Good for the village.
Okay, that's it for me, trustee Jefferson.
Thank you, Mayor Jefferson. First item on my agenda tonight is I make a motion to authorize Mike Riley, Dan Gay, and Gary Malinsky to attend a one-day laboratory training seminar in Blasberg on April 14, 2011, and it counts towards their hours to get certified, but they have to keep their certification up every year.
Second. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Hockrow, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by you, who sign a "aye".
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Okay, the second item on my agenda is I request an executive session to discuss an electrical issue, and I'll put that in form of a motion.
Second. Which one?
Go ahead, say again. Sorry. Go ahead.
Trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker. Roll call, vote, trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
Trustee Roberts.
Aye.
Trustee Hockrow.
Aye.
And the mayor will sign.
Okay, and I, just before the meeting, I spoke with people from the figure skating, and the original agreement that we said at the last meeting, they're going to put Wi-Fi in here, it hinged on whether the hockey club and the figure skating both agreed to it, and they've agreed to it, so we're going to go ahead and put Wi-Fi here at the rink, and it'll be good for the parents, and good for the village. That's all I have to report tonight, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Jefferson. Trustee Roberts. Trustee Baker. Excuse me.
Take his mic, now he won't speak.
All right, I'd like to request an executive session to discuss civic center personnel.
Second. Moved by trustee Baker, seconded by trustee Jefferson, any discussion? Oh, no, 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 I'm not dealing with you guys. Roll call, vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. That's it for me. Thank you, trustee Baker. Trustee Roberts.
I just have a few things that I'd like to report on, the first is, we had our annual wastewater treatment plant inspection, and we have a report, this is from the DEC, it's an annual inspection.
Yeah.
The report showed that our annual wastewater treatment plant inspection conducted on January 21st, 2011, in general, the facility was found to be well-maintained and operating within its permits limits. So I'd like to thank Tom Reed, Ernie Barkley, and Grand Dean for doing what they do and doing it well. Next thing I'd like to report is, we received a letter from New York Rural Water Association, this is where we send all of our folks down to get their training. Well, the House of Representatives has just passed revision to the budget, and it's going to lower the total available funds, and they're asking us to send a letter of support from the village to this water association supporting, basically, they're looking for our support to try and maintain the state funding that's provided, so I think Carol's going to work on that, and just doesn't know that we support that. This is very important.
No? She not paying attention. What think you could put in there, that they should maintain, at least what they're doing now, or not more, or no more mandates from you people, because we just can't take it.
Well, I believe they're going to send us a template of the letter, where basically that they're asking. So hopefully, we'll get all the other stuff covered. And the last thing I would like to do is request an executive session to discuss the police issue, please.
Right, move forward.
Yes, we will.
Second. Moved by trustee Roberts, seconded by trustee Jefferson, and roll call, vote, trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
Trustee Roberts.
Aye.
Trustee Hockrow.
Aye.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, and the mayor will sign. That's why I get it out. Okay, trustee Hockrow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Passing out a tax reduction score sheet that we agreed with the fire department on last, last week when Brian and I were, you know, to read, and changed a couple little things in it, but this is a score sheet that basically is adopted by the Canadian Bill system, and the, and the state comptroller has approved it, with the changes that are in it, which makes, it's pretty, pretty, because it's pretty much going to go the way it is, and I don't, do we need a motion or something to approve of this, or maybe not?
Well, basically, what it's doing is defining what an active member, what an active member is, I, I think that we should at least let the fire department know that we support it or not, or don't support it, and that way, they can implement this, because right, right now, they don't have it implemented.
Well, in that case, we'll turn into a motion.
Yeah, and I'll second that. Moved by trustee Hockrow, seconded by trustee Jefferson, any discussion?
Just for clarity reasons, what this does is basically, it, it has, it makes the fire department members earn their 10% reduction, they're just not on the roster, you have to earn it in order to be, in order to get that 10% tax deduction, so I think it's a great move on the fire department, and it's a good move by us to, actually, if we're going to give this 10% discount in their tax rate, it has to be earned, and that's what this does, it sets the guidelines, and they have to earn it, so I think it's a great move.
You can see that there are a variety of ways that each fire person can get to the total number of points that they need per year. So, and the people that worked with us in the fire department are, are serious about this whole thing, it's not a game with them, they, they want their brothers to be responsible.
Move your information, sir. Roberts. Trustee Roberts. Oh, you got a very nice compliment from legislator in Nattis, he said, you did one beautiful job in this presentation to the school board, and the school board has approved it.
That's great.
You were the one that put him over the top.
There we go.
Anyway, that, that means that the town of Champlain, and including, I thank the town of Orange, because they completely approved this, and that's what the rest of the county's looking at, is left up here. So, starting in September, you will go under eligible, and at this point, they had not stated, well, how are we going to get it, you know, you got, sure, we're going to have to go up at the assessor's office, and whatever has to be done.
Fill out some application.
But starting in, on the school board budget this year, September, you'll be getting the reduction.
Now, Mr. Mayor, we have most on the floor.
All right.
Just hope you don't feel well. I thought Jefferson was deprimating.
No, he was sad, like Frank Hoick, he was done.
Oh, yeah. Snap it in half.
And that one rings the way you used to.
Any other discussion? It's not all those in favor, vote by you, who sign a "aye".
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
And, Mr. Mayor, I would like that Mr. Brian would pass on to the village group, a beautiful job they have done in cleaning up after two snowstorms, and maybe tomorrow morning, a third one. Beautiful job, the village looks just, hey, when you place around and have it look as good as this. Commend it, please.
I will, thank you.
Yes, they did.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Totally amazed by the snow. Well, hmm.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
You're listening.
Yes, I heard you. I'll have to see if you can repeat it. Carol?
I have nothing.
That's it?
I just want to report that I'm still pulling along on the budget, and that hopefully, I'll have the rest of the sheets that I'm going to turn in by end of week.
Thank you. Brian?
I just have a couple things to report, we had our confined space training today, it was very informational, it was good for the guys to be aware of what can harm them, and, you know, the safe procedures of, I think, entering the confined space, and another thing about our electric utilities that we have here in the village, we're very unique with the underground, but that also causes other problems with the snow, snow removals, snow plows, so I just want people to be aware of those green boxes, those are our power supplies, so if you're out there plowing, and the fire hydrants, we have, right now, we have maybe a third room, a hot room dug out, and by tomorrow, 4 o'clock, they'll all be dug out. But we're going to continue removing the snow, especially in the places that you have to creep out into the intersections, the, you know, we're trying to get the business section done first, and we're going to do, you know, the other safety issues, so we're going to be hauling snow for quite a while until it's gone.
Basically, we're going to go at every intersection?
Every intersection, just to drop those banks down so people can see, so they can pull out.
Safety first.
Safety first, definitely.
Whatever it takes.
May I have a snow sale?
We'll bring you all you want?
I went up to that, saw that plow, and oh my God. Looked you up in the back.
But, also, all the public works we've been working on, and the line crew, the electric department, they've been putting there, they've been helping cleaning out fire hydrants, and the wastewater's been helping us pile in the snow, I mean, it is a team effort.
Oh, yeah.
I know the water plant's been working, keeping the sidewalks clear for us, like around the village office, so it is a team.
I know you guys are extremely, extremely busy, but have you assessed the snow on the rooftops?
Yes, we have, actually, I did this afternoon, and the ones that really would be concerned about is the PD, and the village garage down at the village office, because of flat roofs, and we're going to get, actually, up there tomorrow and inspect them, but they have to be shoveled, we're going to shovel them off.
Yeah, I spoke with Brian this afternoon, and I said, we're going to get more snow, it's really heavy right now, so...
Those are mostly our concerns, all the rest of the roofs are in pretty good shape, the library's got slate, and that all pretty much went off today, and the rest of them are a pretty good peaked roof, like direct center here.
Thank you.
Anything else, Brian?
No, that's all I have.
Thank you very much, sir. Open meeting to the public at this time, anybody who can address the board, minute or so. No one wish to address the board? I'll make a motion for recess. Turn at 22. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. 13 for all, may I? Good change of rules tonight, old man.